Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of November twenty fifth. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call Ms. Flores.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Here.
Trustee Willis?
Here.
Trustee Hyferman?
Here.
Trustee Simson?
Here.
Trustee Mason? And trustee Roman?
Here.
Representing staff this evening, to my left is our village manager Napoleon Heaney. To my right is our village attorney Chris Cummings. To the audience's right, our police chief Denise McGrath, Assistant Director of Finance Lindsay Cabaye, Finance Director Amy Zukowski, Economic and Community Development Director Angela Messeres, and Assistant Village Manager Terrence Aqua. Also in the audience tonight, we're honored to have the mayor of Ford Heights Freddie Wilson and trustee Jones. Welcome to the village of Homewood.
Welcome.
The minutes of November eleventh, any additions or corrections? Trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Willis?
None.
Trustee Hyferman? Trustee Simson?
No sir.
Trustee Roman? We have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by trustee Harris Jones, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman? Trustee Simson?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of four hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Comments or questions? Trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Willis? Trustee Hyferman? Trustee Simson?
I don't know.
Trustee Roman? We have a motion to approve the claims list, please.
Second?
Been moved by trustee Hyferman, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Simson?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Claims list is approved. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes ma'am.
Amy Crump, Homewood, Illinois. Brought something different this time, besides reading, instead of reading from the book. First, I wanted to start by saying thank you to the staff for the hot topics meeting held last week. It was well attended, it was fascinating, it was on the TIF districts, and even though I worked with a taxing district and was on the joint review board for about six years, I learned more at that meeting. So I would, I just want to say thanks to the staff and that I hope you keep having. All right, so um, tonight I am actually addressing an incident that took place on November fourteenth when Donald Trump pointed his finger at Catherine Lucy, the White House correspondent for Bloomberg News, and said, quiet, quiet piggy. And the most effective piece written about it, in my opinion, comes from Dr. Stacy Patton. She's an award-winning journalism professor at Howard University, and this is what she wrote. "A sitting president looked at a female journalist in the face and called her piggy, and the room went silent like a kindergarten class when the principal walks in. Every reporter in that room, who loves to brand themselves as defenders of democracy, guardians of truth, and the last line of accountability, just went mute. Nobody said, Mr. President, that's inappropriate. Not one, sir, you can't talk to reporters like that, not even a strategic cough of disapproval or a grunt. That's not normal or democratic, and that's not journalism in a free society. That is the sound of a press corps that has been bullied, intimidated, and humiliated into submission. And what does it say about the state of our politics that a president can do this on camera, in broad daylight, with audio, and the mainstream press covers it like a weather update? There's no sustained outrage, no moral language, no conversation about authoritarianism, no, this is dangerous. They just treat it like a minor gaffe when it is a massive red flag. A president humiliating a journalist to her face and getting silence in return is not a slip up, it's a test. And the press responded with quiet, neutral stenography. My friends, that's not the fourth estate, that is the soft, quiet normalization of dictatorship. The press keeps reporting the words, but not the stakes. They quote the insult, but they refuse to name the danger, and they keep pretending that this is politics as usual when we passed usual several exits ago. This is how authoritarianism rises slowly and quietly. A leader tests the boundary, he insults somebody, everyone freezes, the press reports it neutrally, nothing happens, and he escalates. What this incident reveals is that reporters aren't protecting democracy. They're protecting their asset, access, they're protecting their job security, they're scared, conditioned, and submissive to power, and journalism can't survive that. If the journalists won't defend themselves, how will they defend us? Thank you."
Good. Mr. Landry?
For the record, D O Y L E, L A N D, land, R Y, United States Marine Corps Veterans. Who? Didn't be there. Since the last time we all told. What you were actually reading or receiving is an email from a public police department detective about a shooting attempt, some public murder for, against me. Saturday, October fourth, the address is highlighted for a reason. Fifteen West Ninety-Fifth Street is Ninety-Fifth and the Red Line. Multiple passengers at the beginning of the month. We gathered to take senior citizens who don't leave the house for anything because of the element. We have access to Walgreens and Asco early for prescriptions and Jule for food. So at three thirty in the morning, I was dressed differently. A twenty-ish, oh, twenty-ish year old black miscreant. Trust and believe, the police report will show, that's not the word I used that morning. Because, and this is all tied together, because that same miscreant has boarded three fifty-nine and has wound up at the last stop right across the street from Starbucks. So apparently, he mistook me for someone else because the distance between where my coat is is too far. It's about two, two seats above, ahead of me, ahead of where my coat is. The miscreant took three clear shots. Thank the Lord, he was intoxicated because two of the shots hit the ground, and they all go with his passive. What does that have to do with homeless? What I just said about a minute ago? I saw him multiple times on that same member of Bus Rider. So this past weekend, the fourteen-year-old who was murdered again doesn't deserve to be dead. And if you give me a couple minutes, I'm not, unfortunately, not three minutes. Those parents of that fourteen-year-old will always associate the death of their fourteen-year-old with the beginning of the holiday. The violence must be eradicated, and the only way that it's eradicated is at the roots. The root doesn't start with the parent. The root starts with the heart, think about it. So I just wanted to say, good to see everyone, because you know, I was going to throw out something about pies, but that can't be done currently. It's good to laugh, it's good to be here, because again, it almost didn't happen. There's your copy of the email, and just remember, the worst that we're not sharing with the ones who are showing you they can pull a trigger, is the ones we should be putting our attention to. Don't you think? See you later.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. We're glad you're here. Yeah, Ms. Flores?
We ask the board to consider a motion to pass, approve, authorize, accept, or award the following items. Accept the twenty twenty-four annual report of the Homewood Police Department. Pass Resolution R thirty-two forty-two, canceling the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees scheduled for December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. To pass Ordinance M twenty-three eighty-three, granting a special use permit to Philip Glapian for an indoor fitness center in the B-one downtown core zoning district at one eighty-sixty-five Harwood Avenue. Pass Ordinance M twenty-three eighty-four, granting a special use permit for a salon spa establishment in the B-two downtown transition zoning district to Jaya Pittman of Glam of House at one eighty-one-ten Martin Avenue. Pass Ordinance M twenty-three eighty-five, amending the table of the number of liquor license limitations by class to increase the allowed number of Class twelve-B Bring Your Own Liquor License for One by Mahogany House Candle located at nineteen forty-one Ridge Road, subject to an approved background check. To pass Ordinance M twenty-three eighty-six, reapproving the redevelopment agreement between DP Homewood LLC, Vanna Three Corporation, and the Village of Homewood for the property at thirty forty-three through thirty fifty-five, one hundred and eighty-third Street, formerly in the Kedzie Gateway Tiff, and now in the one hundred and eighty-third West Tiff.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to these matters? Trustee Harris Jones?
Um, nothing for me.
Trustee Willis?
No comments.
Trustee Hyferman?
On item C, the the fitness center going next door to Starbucks, do you have any more information about that? The actual details that we received were there wasn't much detail to it. What is he really looking, and he's not here tonight?
Ms. Messeres?
It will be, it will be a membership gym, so like, um, exercise equipment and weights, and then a small studio in the back for yoga, martial arts. The owner owns martial arts gyms in the city, a few other gyms, and so it's it's, yeah, pretty basically like a gym, membership gym.
Anything else?
Question? No, I'm surprised you said you're presenting.
Uh, no, it was thought so. Trustee Simson?
Uh, item D, um, we had the privilege to have the future owner, Ms. Pittman, who's in the audience today, come in on several occasions to speak with the staff at, on Saturday morning, and all the trustees, everyone else was present. She's very young, a very young entrepreneur, and she's mentored by Grace to one of Grace's building, and I think we were just so impressed with her uh, her energy and her desire to do this. She grew up in Timly Park, and she selected Homewood to be part of her business. She's got a great business plan, she's very young, and just very refreshing for somebody that young to have such a plan and such an idea, and that wants to be part of the home community. She shared a lot of her ideas on how she wants to actually be part of the community, uh, and there's only one approval person also. I really support that idea. That's all I got.
Ms. Pittman, you're not going to get off this easy. Come on up and tell us about your, your plans.
You're prepared anyways.
This young lady is a dynamo.
He's over-exaggerating this ability. Um, I wrote up just something so I don't stumble on my words. Um, good evening. First, I would like to thank the board for the time for hearing my case. Um, to introduce myself, my name is Jaya Pittman. I'm twenty-three years old, and I've been an entrepreneur, nail technician for over seven years. My true passion has always been in the beauty industry. My goal since the beginning was to, one, provide a safe, dependable, and welcoming work environment to service providers, and, two, create a one-stop shop where people can get all services done by talented licensed professionals. And, three, make an impact to people's lives in the community in a positive way using my talented resources.
You're down on the time.
Sorry. I've been practicing.
Slow down. You're amongst friends.
Um, there are multiple reasons why Homewood is ideal town for our salon suites, like the location, transit advantages, and a diverse business and resident base. I'm not only an entrepreneur, but I also run and organize nonprofit events for the community involving local entrepreneurs, families, and businesses, like pop-up shops, back-to-school events, coat and toy drives. For the past two years, I posted a nonprofit event called CEO or sorry. It's a networking event based on focused on bringing free resources to entrepreneurs, like financial advisors, real estate consultants, product event, product and brand developers, therapists, and credit specialists, all in one room to connect and collaborate. I also work closely with organizations like Educating Our Community and the Southland Development Authority to help execute my business ideas, events, and it connects other people and different resources. These are all factors I plan to bring to Homewood, but I also would love to use what Homewood already has to offer, like the new Violence and Abuse Center, bringing beauty resources to women in need. Um, like business attire, clothing for job interviews, or anything in the future. Um, or networking with businesses like Mason &amp; Flowers, a tea shop to bring clientele to one another. My salon stands out and compares to others' local salons in Homewood because of the different services we offer, from waxes, facials, eyelash extensions, nail care, and services, and more. We aren't also taking away from Homewood, but we're bringing so many things to offer to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Roman?
Well, this makes me old, feel old because I grew up with your parents. I went to H F with them, okay, so, um, and I remember when we were born. Um, I saw your name on the agenda, and I was like, can there be two Jaya Pittmans? Like, I think that's gotta be her, right? So, um, I know, I wasn't at the last board meeting, I know that there was a conversation about the salon suites. I personally, just to add a little bit of context how I look at them, I, um, the special use permits. I look at them like, if we're, if there's a concern, are we worried about parking? Are we worried about safety? Are we worried about ADA compliance? I don't see any concerns. I, 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 and then I also think we have a landlord who wants to fill a spot, we have you, an entrepreneur, who wants to build something, and I'm all for it. I don't want to see us stand, or myself, my vote, stand in the way of something like that, so I fully support it. Um, that's how I felt even before hearing what you've said here tonight. I think this is amazing, and, um, I'm sure your family and your parents are so proud of you.
Thank you.
With all that being said, may I have a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Then moved by trustee Simson, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Simson?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Full business. Discussion of the twenty twenty-five real estate tax levy is a costume, Ms. Cabaye.
And?
And, oh, I'm sorry, our village manager.
So mayor and board, uh, tonight we're here to talk about something that happens every year, our real estate tax levy. Um, what is a tax levy request? Taxing districts levy taxes, uh, which are, they levy tax to all of the property owners in their, in their jurisdiction. Unique, unique thing about property tax levy is that every taxing district does the exact same thing, whether it be library district, a school district, everyone is doing a tax levy and actually passing a tax levy at the exact same time according to state statute. Now, this is unique because tax bills were recently released, but, uh, we have some information for that. So you'll notice some various themes that staff will mention during the course of this presentation. We will summarize those themes at the end of the presentation. It's important to understand, Homewood falls under PTE, the Property Tax Extension Limiting Law. Uh, a lot of people say cap, but it's not really a cap. The state likes to say limit. So what the PTE does, it limits our ability to increase our tax levy from last year to this year by five percent or CPI. Uh, this year, the CPI is two point nine percent. So that is our max, that is our limit. That is all we can increase our tax levy, nothing more, uh, but definitely something less, but nothing more. Uh, for reference, we wanted to show a visual of the, uh, the, what a tax levy looks like. So in essence, there are roughly twenty-three specific taxes that the state statute allows for municipalities to tax for. Homewood taxes for roughly eleven of those taxable items. As corporate, uh, that's our operations, police pension, fire pension, street and bridge, fire protection. We're going to talk a lot about, uh, uh, our police pension and fire pension. We can even levy for the cost of crossing guards, which we do. I can keep going. So, the next main point is Homewood's portion of our property tax bill. We say it often, but we roughly, uh, Homewood's portion is roughly eleven percent. So eleven cents out of every dollar that a property taxpayer pays, eleven cents comes to Homewood. Uh, that's important to mention.
Well, that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Amy. The next slide. That eleven percent is relatively low compared to our counterparts, thank you. Uh, as you can see on the screen, we have, there are a lot of, a lot of communities are more dependent upon property taxes than Homewood. If you look at Orland Park, some of the more, um, retail-rich communities are not as dependent on property taxes. But some of the communities that are not fortunate enough to have a lot of retail and commercial are dependent on property taxes. It's also important to note that property taxes were initially created by the state to help fund school districts. So it's not un, it's not unnatural to see school districts host the lion's share of property tax. That is normal.
Thank you, Mayor Heaney. Thanks, Cabaye.
Great. So, some of this is going to be repeat from Napoleon, but as he mentioned, being a non-home rule community, Homewood is limited under the parameters of PTE when we're setting the annual tax levy. So in order to set the levy amount, we start with the prior year's final extended capped amount as our baseline. Uh, so that would be the six point eight, or six point nine million at the top there. Um, then under PTE, the village is allowed to increase the levy by the lesser of five percent or the change in CPI. And as Napoleon previously stated, for twenty twenty-five, the change in CPI was two point nine percent. They'll just also allow to capture property taxes for new construction, which Homewood, being mostly a landlocked community, estimates, the Homewood estimates at a conservative half of a percentage. So making the total increase for the twenty twenty-five tax capped levy three point four percent. This makes the total increase, or this makes, this comes out to about seven point two million dollars, which compared to last year is an increase of about, uh, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, as you can see up there. So with the calculation of the capped levy amount, we then start to break out how these dollars need to be allocated. So under PTE and the Illinois Property Tax Code, municipalities are allowed to levy for pension funding and employer taxes. Um, and while other funding sources can be used to bunch, fund pensions, much like other communities, Homewood has historically used property taxes to fund these. All pensions, including IMRF, uh, make up about sixty-two percent of the total capped levy amount, and of that sixty-two percent, eighty-nine percent is, uh, directly related to police and fire pensions. So where do these amounts come from for the police and fire pensions? So we know, per the state's pension code, that all police and fire pension funds must, must reach a ninety percent funded status by the year twenty forty. To support this mandate, the state's consolidated pension system provides the village with an annual statutory minimum contribution amount designated to keep each fund on track towards that ninety percent funding requirement. So for police pension, that amount came out to a little over two point nine million dollars, and for fire pension, it was just under a million. The combination of these two amounts, uh, led to an increase of about four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over the prior year, or about fourteen percent. Keep in mind, as I stated earlier, our total capped levy increase is only about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So after we've plugged in our pensions and employer payroll taxes, uh, put employer payroll costs into the levy allocation, the next step is to allocate, uh, the, the remaining dollars towards the various areas that Napoleon had mentioned when he had the tax levy example. So, um, first, one of the, uh, levy items we're allowed is to, uh, put costs into the audit. So there's no restriction on the amount, it's just you are able to levy for as much as the cost of those audit expenses are for the year. So sixty thousand is a safe number for the village. And then next, we're able to levy for liability or risk management insurance. So this is our annual premium cost to, for workers' compensation and general liability coverage. So that number is the one point two. So once we plug in the sixty thousand and the one point two, the remaining is allocated based off of, um, some rates set by the state among the corporate, fire, police, streets, and school crossing guard. So those combined is all money that goes into the general fund to help pay for the day-to-day operations of the village, and that comes to only about a million dollars that we have left of that total capped seven point two that goes into the general fund and not obligated for audit, risk management, or pension payments.
So, so the seven point two million dollars that we levy in property tax, after you remove the police-fire pension, IMRF, and those, uh, three items at the top, the, the only amount that actually makes it to the general fund for operations is roughly one million dollars.
And help put that million dollars in further context. You remember, at the November eleventh board meeting, we had a claims list that was one point eight million dollars. That's just one of our twenty-four claims lists that we have during the year. So our total operating budget is twenty-seven point seven million dollars. This one million dollars, um, is not the driving revenue source for the village. Um, sales tax, as we've mentioned many times, anytime I'm up here, I feel like I'm always talking about how important sales tax is to the village, along with, we have a diverse revenue stream of other fines and fees, um, and shared state taxes. Oh, can you go back one more? Um, just so on the far right, just in a prudent perspective, all of those numbers are negatives, except for the liability insurance, it has a almost twenty percent increase. That's because the lion's share of the seven point two million is going to the pension funding. Um, so the remaining amount has to come from somewhere, because the pensions went up four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, our total levy can only increase by two hundred and seventy-five, three, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So the general fund is where the impact of that is spelled. So now, after we've kind of dealt with, um, the amounts that fall under PTE, we are allowed to levy for some additional, um, line items, the biggest one being debt service payments. So in twenty twenty-four, the village issued a two point six million dollar non-refundum general obligation bond, so the seven hundred, almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the amount needed to pay the principal and interest payments towards that debt, towards that outstanding debt. Um, so with that, um, that brings our total twenty twenty-five proposed levy to, uh, seven point nine million dollars. Now, something that's, um, new for the village, but not new for most other municipalities, is that we'd like to present another option to the board for consideration. So that is option one on this table. So the first column is showing the final twenty twenty-four levy. Option one is showing a zero percent increase to the levy, so that would be keeping our capped portion of our levy flat. So you can see the six point nine million dollars would be the same in that column two, option one. Um, and then option two is the three point four increase that we just kind of walked through, how that is calculated, and how we plug in the numbers for the levy. So that total capped levy would be seven point two million dollars. So that results in essentially two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars less going to the general fund. So the highlighted yellow section shows the general fund. Last year, we were able to levy nearly one point six million dollars to be allocated to general fund. Under option one, eight seventy-one, under option two, just over a million dollars. But if you look above the three, the top three lines, especially the pension line, does not change whether it's option one, option two, because this is our main source of funding for pensions and risk management. Um, so again, just trying to highlight that the impact will fall to the general fund. Um, that's just less money that we can use towards municipal services, equipment, vehicles, operations. So so just to kind of summarize, basically everything that Amy just stated, so under both options, the pension costs must increase by twelve percent, which again is driven by the state mandated requirements, and is not, is not affected whether the village raises the levy or decides to keep it flat. Where the difference really comes into play is the impact with the general fund, which is used to fund all municipal services, such as equipment, vehicles, and operations. So with option one, uh, the general fund would need to absorb forty-five percent reduction in its levy allocation, whereas in option two, uh, there's a smaller reduction at about thirty percent, which has less of an impact on maintaining the stability in our operating budget. And under both options, uh, the Homewood's share of the tax bill will remain at about eleven percent. And under both options, uh the Homewood's share of the tax bill will remain at about eleven percent. So just keeping in mind, the village is only one small piece of the overall tax bill, which includes other taxing bodies that are located within um the village as well. So summarize everything we've went through. Again, we are just a small portion of the tax bill. It's eleven percent. Or eleven cents out of every dollar that is paid in taxes goes back here to the village, and then the majority of that is used to fund pensions. Um but with that small eleven cents on the dollar that's paid, we're providing to our residents and. All taxpayers, you know, the high um quality amenities, high level of services. So uh that's something that. We're proud of, but again, why we rely on sales tax so much. Um the maximum P T L levy increase generates only two hundred and thirty seven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars over the prior year levy. So. Even if we don't want to go with option one, which is the zero percent increase, option two. Uh the max that we're going to get from that is two thirty seven, but that's something more that at least offsets the impact of the general fund. The police and fire pension fund requirements increased by nearly four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars over last year's prior levy. Um and again, that's money that's just taken right off the top, um as we set the uh tax gap. Uh number four, all pensions, including police, fire, and I M R F, make up sixty two percent of the total capped portion of the levy. And of that, eighty nine percent is police and fire. And lastly, property taxes only contribute roughly one million dollars for a twenty seven point seven million dollar general fund budget. So once again, village's revenue is not, um the village's operating budget is not being. Uh maintained with property taxes alone. In fact, it's just a very, very small piece of the pie. It's an important piece, but um. It is uh not the number one driver.
So village staff, so our staff recommendation, uh from all of this information, village staff recommends moving forward with option two. Uh that gives us a nominal three point four percent increase, uh which is allowed under the P T L, the property tax extension limiting law. And this is consistent, ha, uh this is consistent to how Homewood has set our levy in the past. We've always gone to five percent or C P I. Um because future levies are based on prior year final levy amounts, it's important to understand. That whatever we do this year will impact our ability to increase or or move next year. Because the the uh levy is based on prior year. So if any, if. If we do not increase this year by three point four percent, next year, next, come next year, we would be starting at a lower amount. Everyone kind of. Lost revenue that you can never capture ever, ever, never again. So that's our presentation. Uh we're open to any questions. Thank, like to.
Discussion and provide direction to staff on which option you would like us to move forward with. Um we will publish a truth and taxation hearing, uh notice in the newspaper to be held on December ninth. And then the tax levy ordinance approval would be at the December ninth board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience, Amy?
I would just like to say thank you for providing that. I did my homework ahead of time and I'm ready. Also, uh I am aware of at least one other village that is not near here. That uh made a point of saying every year, we're not raising the taxes, we're not raising taxes. And and they'd be like, now we're going on ten years of not raising taxes. And I'm like, you're morons. Because of what you said, because if you don't raise the taxes every year, you're, you're, yeah. So thank you.
Anyone else? If that board discussion, trustee Harris Jones.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Very well received and. Option two sounds good to me.
First, you will.
Yes, uh option one will be asking the villagers to, you know, work with less when costs are going up. Uh that just doesn't make sense. Uh thank you for this presentation and for explaining it to us individually and answering questions.
I support your recommendation. Thank you.
I support your recommendation as well. I appreciate the uh information and indication the whole staff provided us.
Trustee Mason.
Hi, as as everybody said, I appreciate this presentation. I appreciate the work you guys do on uh. This as well as educating us, because it really is an educational week, it's been coming with you. So I appreciate your mentorship.
Trustee Roman.
Yeah, um so everybody knows kind of what the process behind the scenes was. We meet with the staff. Um either individually or two of us at a time to kind of. Get this information, and I really appreciate that because um it gives me time to think about it before. We're here, because oftentimes when we don't hear about things before, I'm thinking about it later, and I wish I would have had time to ask a question. So as a realtor, property taxes are part of my everyday life, and it is a very sensitive subject right now. Um so when we were presented with these two options, I did kind of go back and forth. Like we talked about in the meeting, and I thought a lot about it. Um but I did the math on my own property taxes. I just pulled it up again because I left the post at home. Um my property taxes are twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty seven dollars a year. And if the assessed value stayed the same, because this is all based off of assessed value, if the assessed value stayed the same. With this three point four percent increase, my taxes would go up six dollars and fifty cents. I have a pretty high tax bill. Um a lot of people in Homewood have pretty high tax bills, but that's on the higher end. Um. So six dollars and fifty cents a year. Versus. A negative balance for our general fund. So I know the headline would be they're raising the property taxes again. But really, it's a very minor amount of money that is added to your property tax. And to your point, Napoleon. The majority of this is going to our school. Um. So, all of that to say, I support option two, but I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of background on.
And how we got this, um just to kind of add to what you're saying. So remember the. The three point four percent is just on the village's eleven percent share, not on the bottom line of your total tax bill. All of the other taxing districts, as Napoleon's, that are in the same process right now, so they may be increasing their levy. But the portion that our residents would see with the three point four percent is only off of that small eleven percent of the bill, not your total.
We have the press in the audience, or perhaps you'd like trustee Roman to write the headlines for you. With all that being said, we're looking for four items in here. May I have a motion to approve option two? Publish, publish the truth and taxation notice, conduct the truth and taxation hearing on twelve nine. And prepare the uh ordinance for the twelve nine board meeting for the uh option two approval.
So moved.
And moved by trustee Willis, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson? Trustee Mason?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Motion is approved. General board discussion, trustee Harris Jones.
Uh yes, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and also to wish everyone a happy and safe. Thanksgiving, but I do have an announcement to make. If you guys, please listen with me. Uh holiday lights announcement is December fifth, twenty twenty five. I want to remind our residents that the village's annual holiday light celebration will take place next Friday, December fifth. From five to nine at Martin Square. We'll be lighting the village tree, the carousel will be running, and we'll wrap up the evening with the holiday parade. Hopefully, the weather cooperates and it won't be too cold. Then on Saturday morning, head over to the holiday market and the auditorium from nine AM to one PM. To get a head start on Christmas shopping. Remember, the village will be selling holiday mugs from previous years. We hope to see everyone out there for a festive weekend in Homewood.
Thank you.
Also, I I would also like to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And uh the holiday lights festival is always a good time, and I am so looking forward to that.
That's the excellent.
I'm going to take this opportunity, as it's Thanksgiving week, to express my gratitude to village staff. My fellow trustees, everyone serving the village, the press, our guests. And uh and then also just personally, as it's been a difficult year, I um express my gratitude for everyone's support.
Thank you. First, he seems to.
Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and uh safe driving and uh please be courteous to everyone and a little man safe and uh. I go over to most of Scott's here in the fourth.
Trustee Mason.
Um I'd like to, first, I'd like to apologize to everybody for my tardiness. Work, work hall, so I was a little late, but I appreciate you all being here. Please have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Stay safe. Um Thanksgiving is one of those holidays when you see a lot of uh fire calls. So make sure you 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 take care of it. You you watch things on your stove. Uh any of you frying turkeys, make sure they're away from the house. Um and also, uh looking forward to holiday lights, Black Friday, shop small. We've got a lot of, uh we're going to a lot of wonderful small businesses. Uh take a stroll down uh. Downtown Homewood and shop at your local businesses on on Friday and Saturday.
First, you're only.
Yeah, small business Saturday, right? And I think there, there's our H B A doing something. Uh I just echo everything that's already been said. I appreciate all of you and appreciate all of you, and I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
As uh the presentation noted, majority of our money comes from sale taxes. So shop Homewood, it's important. We have, we need that money. Again, I wish everyone a blessed Thanksgiving. I'd like to thank Mayor uh. Mayor Wilson and uh trustee Jones from Port Heights for joining us this evening. Thank you for being here. You're welcome anytime. But then may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Mason. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Willis?
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Mason?
Trustee Roman.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.